Okay, we'll go ahead and start. Welcome, everyone, to the city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September the 7th. And we'll go ahead and we'll call this city council meeting to order. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Don.
Here.
Jody. Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum today. Agenda item number four, entertain a motion then to approve tonight's agenda. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agendas. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. She's gonna be done. Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Today, I'd like to thank Kylie Scow, our videographer. And I've been asked to read a proclamation for Poppy Day on September the 13th. And just a little history about the poppy, the buddy poppy. It's a small red flower symbolic of the bloodshed in World War I by millions of Allied soldiers in defense of freedom. This was originally sold to provide relief for the people of war-devastated France. But in 1924, the distribution of poppies became a national program here in the United States of the American Legion. So the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the citizens of Algonah support our men and women who have served or are serving our country now to protect our freedom, whereas the citizens of Algonah owe a deep debt of gratitude to all servicemen and servicewomen who have made sacrifices to keep America a free country. Whereas the citizens of Algonah appreciate the 89 years of service given to our city by the VFW Post 2541 and 87 years of service given by the auxiliary. Now, therefore, I, Richard Murphy, Mayor of Algonah, hereby proclaim September the 13th, 2021, as VFW Buddy Poppy Day in Algonah. And I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing and appreciating the hard work and dedication of our VFW post and the auxiliary. Also, just a reminder that tomorrow evening at the Waters Edge Nature Center from 5 until 8:00 PM is a retirement reception honoring Linda Vaut for her many years of dedication to the care team. And we certainly want to thank Linda for all she's done and all the many people that she's helped through the years. And then the following evening, Thursday, from 5 until 8:00 on Nebraska Street near the Carnegie Library is Public Safety Night Out. It's a chance to meet and to thank law enforcement, ambulance, fire personnel, as well as joining the festivities, a chance to win some prizes. There's some free food. And I think there's even a dump tank. So I'm not sure if the people in the dump tank are the city council members or maybe just the city administrator. I'm not sure. But anyway, come and enjoy the evening. So council have anything that they would like to share? Right? Okay, hearing none. Is there an update then from the city administrator?
Just a quick update regarding a couple of street projects. On Moore Street reconstruction, McGregor Street, McGregor Street intersection is going to remain closed for at least a couple more weeks. We are looking at possible temporary options to open that for temporary time before it's paved with harvest coming up. And we know that's a very busy road with equipment semi. So we'll have an update on that after the September 15 construction meeting. But since we were originally hoping to have that open here first part of September, let people know that that will remain closed at least for the next couple of weeks. Other than that, we've got a number of other street projects going around town. And just remind folks that they can go to our city Facebook page or the city website, which includes links that they can go to project websites to see status updates on where we're at on various street projects around town.
Thank you, Jacob. Agenda item number seven. Then we'll move to the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak? Seeing none, is there anyone on the phone, Deb, or anything? Okay. We'll move then to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda. And that includes approving the minutes from the August 16 council meeting, as well as the minutes from the August 30 work session, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, and to approve Jacob's administrator's report. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We'll move into new business. Agenda item number nine. This is an ordinance, the third reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of Elm Street.
As the mayor mentioned, this is a third reading of an ordinance to vacate the far east undeveloped portion of Elm Street located east of Clark Street. The intent would be that this section of unimproved street would be incorporated to a future city park there on the city-owned property adjacent to the north.
Move to waive the third reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, and a second from Rodney to waive the third reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Move to approve the third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to adopt the third reading. Approve the third reading. Sorry. Approve the third reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler. Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to adopt. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number 10 is an ordinance concerning parking during a snow emergency. This is the first reading.
This ordinance pertains to parking in municipal lots when a snow emergency or when the snow ordinance is in effect. Currently, we only allow 24-hour parking in our downtown. We've been looking at different ways, and that will remain. We've been looking at different ways to improve our efficiency and quality of our snow removal. One of the challenges that we have is all the scattered cars within the lots, even if they are moving, and having to go around, or snow and ice building up on cars that either go in spots that haven't been cleared yet or completely cleared. So this ordinance makes two changes to the city's snow emergency ordinance. The first is rather minor and simply changes the official trigger for when the snow emergency is declared from being stated on a local radio station to being stated or notified via the alert Iowa system. We'll still notify the radio and have it on there as we otherwise would, but it's just the formal step that officially, when a snow ordinance is in effect or not. And that's really because from that system, we can initiate it from anywhere. Where I suppose if it's a really bad snow and we go to make that announcement, the radio may not be able to get on there right away. The bulk of the change is in the second paragraph of the proposed ordinance in the downtown parking lots. Or the municipal parking lots, but the only municipal lots we have are downtown. And so under the ordinance, each lot would be signed with a side A and a side B signage. When a snow ordinance is declared, that first night, there would be no parking on side A from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Parking during the day would, you know, be as it usually is. You understand, businesses are, you know, open and people need a space to park. But then that following evening, if the snow ordinance is still in effect, then all vehicles would be required to park on the designated side of B to allow clearing on side A. I think this will improve our efficiency in the downtown, which will allow us to hit the other areas of town sooner as well. This was discussed with the Streets and Sewer Committee, which was where we came up with the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, thinking of that, that's a fair balance of easy to remember as well as not interfering with business hours, but providing enough time for our crews to get in there and do that snow removal. With that, all in my piece. And if there's any questions or any other discussion.
Are there signs that are posted for side A, side B already? Or do we have to put signs up first?
They're actually signs created and posted.
And then just to clarify, for that alert Iowa system, that's just a text message that comes right to your phone then, or?
Yeah, it's a statewide system that you can sign up for either email or text or phone call at.
Motion to waive the first reading. Second.
We have a motion from Rodney and a second from Don to waive the first reading. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Motion to adopt the first reading.
Approve.
Approve the first reading. God, why did we use that word adopt 20 years ago? Second.
It's when you adopt your ordinance.
Yeah, I know.
You have a third reading.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney and a second from Don then to approve the first reading.
Yep, thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And we feel we have plenty of time to go through the three readings before, I mean, that's tonight, but.
Yeah, so we'd be looking at doing the third reading at first meeting in October. So we think we'll be able to get that out in our fall newsletter as well as get the signs ordered and hopefully get information out to property owners and landlords informing them of the new ordinance.
Okay, agenda item number 11. This is a resolution concerning Key Industrial Park.
This resolution has a number of different items that it addresses. First, just so we're aware of what we're discussing, this is regarding the sale of Lot 7, Key Industrial Park, of 8.53 acres. You can see if they're highlighted in yellow. City's had discussions and has a proposed agreement with Fraco, who is the business and property owner to the west. They're interested in purchasing Lot 7 in order to expand their operations within their existing facility by providing increased storage space and operating capacity. The resolution approves a development agreement and the minimum requirements within it that the proposal submitted by Fraco meets those minimum requirements as well as orders the notice of competitive bidding as well as fixing a public hearing on the proposed sales. So I'll just kind of go through and break those down. For Lot 7, we're proposing to sell the property for $40,000 an acre. Fraco would pay $30,000 cash per acre. The other $10,000 per acre would be provided through a forgivable loan to Fraco. That loan would be forgiven upon then meeting certain employment requirements. That'd be increase in total employee count by a minimum of three by October 31, 2022, then an additional four by October 31, 2023, and then an additional three by October 31, 2024. If they maintain their current levels of staffing as well as meet those performance targets at that time, then the city would forgive that loan payment. If they were not to meet those performance targets that year, that loan payment would be due and it'd be up to the council whether or not to forgive that or enforce. Another key element with this as part of it is that the agreement includes the city preserving the right of first refusal to purchase the property back from Fraco should they decide to sell the property anytime within the next 99 years, as well as Fraco providing temporary constructions and maintenance easements for the stormwater detention facilities owned by the city just south of the property. Since the city purchased the Key Industrial Park using urban renewal and tax increment financing TIF, there are a number of procedures that must be gone through when the city goes to sell this land. So that is where element three of the notice of competitive bidding and soliciting competing proposals comes into effect. So under state law, anyone has 30 days from notice to submit an alternative proposal which would exceed what Fraco is proposing. I will note, though, that this development agreement has a number of different items in terms of, obviously, job creation and willing to sign a right of first refusal. So that is set to be published on September 16th. And so the bid period on that would close on noon on October 18th. And there's a lengthy publication that would go with that. And then there would be finally a public hearing regarding the proposed sale, just as we do before we dispose any property on the proposed agreement. So this resolution initiates those proceedings and orders the clerk to take the necessary steps to make the publications for the hearing and competitive bid criteria and timeline. So we are looking at getting that published mid-September, having the bid period close noon October 18th, holding the public hearing on October 18th, and then closing on or before November 1st as the development agreement is proposed. Are there any questions on that?
We discussed quite a bit of that in work session last time, so.
I answered a lot of them. Barb, do you have anything to add that I skipped over?
Okay.
So do we need to wait? We just need a motion to approve the resolution?
Correct.
And do we have to do it separately? But it contains all four things, so just approve the resolution?
Yep, one resolution approving four different items.
Okay. Then I make a motion to approve the resolution?
Sorry, Jacob, I was on mute.
Oh.
I'm gonna clarify that the reason we have to do the competitive bid process, yes, it's in a tip area, but we're also selling the property above the actual value of the property the way it's set. If we were selling it below value with the development agreement, we would not have to go through the competitive bid process.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney.
A second.
And a second from Harley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 12 is a resolution pertaining to downtown design guidelines.
This resolution approves a professional services agreement with Burglin &amp; Cram, an architecture and planning firm based out of Mason City to facilitate the planning process and then develop a downtown design guidelines. This was one of the key recommendations that came out of the 2019 downtown assessment. So this proposal, the total amount of the contract is $38,000, not to exceed. We'd be looking at probably a six to 10-month process overall by the time we hold meetings, develop goals, put the document together, then review. So next steps would be if this is approved, is assembling our steering committee, which is likely to turn into our historic preservation commission. Hopefully, and we would get going here yet this fall so the building inventories can be completed. So hopefully here in the spring of 2022. We've gone through this process identifying those historic preservation elements and as well as that looking at how can we encourage property owners to make those improvements through different incentives, whether that be through a combination of city-state and federal grants, loans, or tax incentives.
Move to approve.
I'm gonna just chime in here. I'm late to the party since I was just appointed, so I wasn't at these, many of these meetings. So I'm kind of just trying to play catch-up. But it kind of seems to me like we have a lot going on. And now, when did you guys, or when did the council discuss this partnership agreement and the details with it?
Our last work session before the, not the one of the 30th, but the one prior to that.
But we put this as a goal back in during that, you know.
Back in 19?
Yeah, I was saying, January of 19, or?
So the downtown assessment, we received that in July of 2019. And then we had originally had the funds in the budget and planned to do this in the spring of 2020.
Yeah.
COVID hit, and we just, as well as some staff turnover, so we just put it on pause until we could get through that transition. We do have the funds in this year's budget for it. And also to clarify, what we're looking at with the design guidelines is not something that would be enforced by city ordinance. You shall in regulating like that. That is not what this document would produce. If that was the will of stakeholders and owners and future councils, that's something that could be looked at. But this document is not that. It's really identified as a resource, best practices, as well as helping us to design targeted programs to help preserve and restore those key architectural elements in our downtown.
Okay.
Is there gonna be any overlap with the community visioning? I don't know if that's the next item, but I mean, are these clearly looking at separate things here? They're not gonna be double?
Yeah, the community visioning, you're really looking at transportation assets and infrastructure as well as entryway and having your key intersections. So I imagine if you're visioning, you'll probably look at that, you know, State and 169 intersection. I'm not sure whether or not we'll go into the downtown and our runway. I imagine not. So I don't really see the overlap between them.
And again, I'm new to this. So the revitalization, we're gonna have a committee of members appointed to that, or?
Yeah, so one of the primary objectives that would come out of this is we would establish an historic preservation commission by designating, as part of this evaluation, designating a historic preservation district. That's key in terms of opening up, not on the city side, but on the private developer side. If you have a district designated and your buildings considered to be contributing to that, you can open up state and federal historic tax credits. So that can be 25% at the federal level, or excuse me, 20% at the federal level and 25% at the city level. When the Obie Lane Building, when that was redeveloped, really the only way financially, there's nothing that had to make that work, but historic tax credits were key in that. On that instance, the city just declared that historic by ordinance. So what this would do is take that district and all the properties within that, if they were pursuing, you know, an eligible project in terms of actually doing things that would meet the criteria for that, that would open the federal and state historic tax credit programs. And then with that, we would have a city historic preservation commission that would be charged with more or less looking out for the downtown and maintaining and promoting the historic features and assets that we have and likely envision that would probably be the entity that would oversee any locally funded and administered programs for the downtown.
Do you think we'll have an issue coming up with enough people doing the revitalization project and the visioning, community visioning program?
I don't think so.
Okay. A lot of the getting traction with these programs and being successful, we need to have the right people there continuing to, you know, care about it. And I just worry that having a lot going on, we'd struggle getting enough people on each side pushing each project forward. So I just wanted to bring that up as a concern that we have a lot of projects going that need a lot of community involvement in that.
And with the communications manager position that we're hiring, I would imagine on both of these efforts, they would be a key point person and really coordinating and working, you know, be putting together probably a core on the downtown, a committee of five or seven. And you want a balance of, you know, you don't want just to be property owners, you know, or people that don't have any stakeholder in the downtown. So it'd kind of be that group of, you know, looking for people that have backgrounds in architecture or construction, you know, have an interest in the downtown historic preservation or a stakeholder in one way or the other. And then working with the professionals in terms of identifying what's important to Algonah and, you know, helping promote, kind of coordinate those meetings. On the community visioning, you know, we're looking at probably, you know, I think they require a minimum of seven as well. Hopefully, we'll have more than that. But that, we're probably looking at, I believe it's typically one meeting a month. We have discussed, and let's get a little ahead of ourselves, we do have money budgeted this year for a comprehensive plan as well. I would say if we move forward with the community design or downtown design guidelines as well as the community visioning, it probably makes sense to hold that comprehensive plan another year. And I mean, that's a 20-year outlook, so it's not like it's not done this year, you know. You know, something bad will happen. But it makes sense to get through these planning processes so they can be more or less copied, pasted, incorporated into that plan. So when we look at that comp plan, and really that's our policy document for guiding what we're prioritizing in the short and long term, those elements are incorporated in. So I really see, you know, both the downtown design guidelines as well as community visioning is really enhanced, you know, planning efforts that are gonna, you know, pay dividends for decades in reality if they're approached right and followed through on, which is certainly our intent.
Thank you.
I'll second Harley's motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Harley and a second from Rodney. Then good discussion. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 13 is a resolution that deals with the community visioning program.
This resolution authorizes the city's application to the item of the Roadways Community Visioning Program. Applications are due September 15th. This resolution also commits $2,000 from the city that if Algonah is selected to go through the community visioning process, that will spend at least $2,000 in implementing one of the projects identified through that, which shouldn't be any problem. The application looks to be due September 15th. We would find out later that month, at the end of the month, at the end of the month, on whether or not we were selected. If we were, we're looking at a kickoff meeting down in Ames, I know the exact date with me, but November, and then from that kickoff meeting, we're looking at an eleven-month planning process, that committee typically meeting once a month with a combination of focus groups and surveys and public input in there, and so we'll be looking at a final work product delivered in October and November of 2022. This is a, there's no cost to this program in terms of the city, other than really, you know, our time, staff time and facilitating the process, and then, you know, what else we might, you know, do in terms of incidentals, or we just, you know, facilitate meetings or some things like that.
Seems to be a good program, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Don and a second from Brad, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number fourteen is a resolution acknowledging the repayment of an RLF loan.
Kelly Tigas doing business says the market has paid off the balance of her 2019 retail RLF. This resolution acknowledges that and boards the collateral on the loan.
Congrats to her, motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion from Rodney and a second from Tyler, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, and thank you, Kelly, for that repayment. Agenda item number fifteen is a resolution authoring a release of mortgages.
This is, the city has a total of three different mortgages on property owned by Ronald and Lono Brohmback at three eighteen South Minnesota. They are proposing to pay out the balance of those three loans, which is a total of nine thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety cents. This resolution authorizes the clerk and the mayor to release those mortgages upon receiving that payment in full.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Don and a second from Rodney, is there any discussion?
There is one item that I do want to know just for clarification, and the original council pack that's out on Friday only had the two loans in there. There's a third loan added from 2018, the balance is unchanged, it was just that loan was not included, so I wanted to make sure that one's waived as well, so that's why the resolution might look slightly different today than if you check out Friday.
Okay, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen approves a pay application for the library renovation project.
This approves pay application number seven for the library project. This application is the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-seven cents.
The architect has reviewed and recommended payments.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley and a second from Tyler, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. So is pretty much the inside, other than a punch list of fix-its, pretty much done?
Yeah, it's primarily punch lists and just kind of here and there. We are expecting the exterior work on the building itself to begin here shortly. There's some back and forth just confirming numbers by the architects' engineers and the general contractors' engineers. I think the probably biggest thing that's going to impact opening is the delay in the shelving. Can't, can't really do much in terms of moving and opening until that arrives, which right now, the latest we've heard is that's been delayed till October. Hopefully, it's sooner than later, but that likely means we're moving back opening until October or November.
Is that retainage that was left, did that include the exterior, or is that a separate one?
That includes all the exterior.
Exterior too?
Yeah.
Okay.
All the, all the furniture and the shelving, that's all, was ordered as a separate procurement and contract, so that isn't in the construction piece.
Okay, moving then to agenda item number eighteen is an application for the Teets Park Shelter House.
This approves pay application number two in the amount of eighty-one thousand three hundred and one dollars and twenty-one cents. The balance to finish, including retainage, is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney and a second from Tyler, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number nineteen is a pay application for the airport hangar extension.
This is pay application number one for the two-stall hangar expansion project. Pay application number one is the amount of sixty-seven thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty cents. Balance to finish, including retainage, is four hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and two dollars and eighty cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Don and a second from Rodney, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twenty is a consideration for an application for a tax exemption.
Owners of the property at twenty-three twenty Eastland Drive has submitted a tax abatement application for the new residential property that was built here this last year. Is it, is within the urban revitalization area and recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley and a second from Brad, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, and thank you, Jared and Megan, for investing in Algonah. Agenda item number twenty-one is a request for the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors.
As you recall, Phil Alberts, Cassuth County EMS Director, attended a work session with the council on August thirtieth. He had stated then that he would be going to all the various communities in Cassuth County, asking for support and initiating the process of looking at making EMS a county-wide essential service. In response to that request, that's what this agenda item is, up on screen is a draft letter proposing to send to the board of supervisors, assuming the request is approved, and more or less just lays out that the supervisors declared it an essential service, so the process can be initiated for an EMS advisory committee to be established. That would be the entity to look at how the operations would be organized, structured, as well as funding, in terms of costs, as well as funding sources, and ultimately that group would come to a recommendation with the board of supervisors to hopefully eventually go to a ballot for a county-wide vote on making EMS an essential service. But we're several steps from that, so this action item is simply to request that the board of supervisors initiate the process by declaring EMS essential, so the advisory committee or commission can begin studying those items.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley and a second from Don, any discussion? Other than, I realize there's some technical reasons following this, they would adopt that, but I think it's pretty obvious EMS is essential, so it's kind of a logical step. Very good, vote, Deb.
Ellen?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number twenty-two is to approve a street closure for Public Safety Night Out.
Public Safety Night Out is coming up here on Thursday, private eight p.m. On the map here, we've got kind of the area in that more Nebraska street, so proposed street closures are Nebraska Street from Dodge to Harlem with the intersection staying open, and then Moore Street from Nebraska North to the alley with that intersection staying open as well. Obviously, with the Moore Street reconstruction project, Nebraska is serving as the detour. So what we are proposing and what we discussed with the project contractor is the day of the event, they would move the detour from Nebraska Street up to Call Street, that would remain through the rest of the day, and then that following morning, move the detour back to Nebraska, so it would really only be about a half a day where we'd have that detour change. And if this is approved, we'd be getting that announcement up on the city website, as well as on the radio, just informing people that that half a day, that the detour would be a little bit different.
Motion to approve street closure. Sounds like great weather.
We have a motion from Rodney and a second from Don, any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item twenty-three is a notification of terms expiring of future appointments of the Retail Revolving Loan Fund Committee. This is, just states that Levi Traugr and Mike Saban's terms expire September the sixteenth, so this is just the first notification of a future appointment.
And Mayor, I want a clarification on that. Mike Saban's resignation, Brad Hoover assumed his committee assignment, so.
Oh, okay, just automatically.
It's technically now Hoover, that term expires September sixteenth, so.
Okay. Short term there.
That's all right.
Okay, and then item number twenty-four, this is a notification of vacancy and future appointment of the Airport Zoning Board of Committee, Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. This is to fill the remainder of Nick Arnt's term, which expires September the thirtieth two thousand and twenty-four, and this is just a first notification of that. Agenda item number twenty-five is an appointment to the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment to replace Nick Deers. Is there anyone, is there a name to come forth?
Start working on one.
Okay. Hearing none, then we'll move to agenda item number twenty-six, this is an appointment to the Cemetery Board to fill the remainder of Midge Andreessen's term, which expires the thirty-first of March of two thousand and twenty-six.
I'd approached Lynn Keek, and he had agreed that he'd be considered, to be considered for that. Okay, there might have been a name, two, I'm not for sure. Or there was another one. If not, I nominate Lynn Keek for that position.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second then for Lynn Keek to fill the Cemetery Board position, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, thank you, Lynn, for filling that term. And that brings us to the final agenda item number twenty-seven, and that's appointment of police chief, that's a mayor oral appointment, and it was my duty to investigate all the applicants and to appoint the most qualified individual. There were five qualifications that I felt were the most important, and they are experience with Iowa municipalities and municipal code enforcement, experience and knowledge of Algonah and the needs of the community, the number of years of experience as a police officer in Iowa, the number of years of field experience as a patrol officer, and the number of years of experience supervising municipal police officers. So I felt that Bo Miller exceeded the rest of the applicants with these qualifications, so tonight I am appointing Bo Miller as the next chief of police for Algonah, Iowa.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I would move to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley and a second from Brad, is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. So at this time, then, we need to swear in, or?
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we, we are appropriate.
Okay, all right, so Bo, if you would like to come up?
Sure, I'll meet you there.
We gotta put you on camera.
Yeah. So, you have to swear in there, so you'll raise your right hand and repeat that for me, aye, state your name. Benjamin Noah. solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And I will faithfully and impartially. And I, that I will faithful, faithfully and impartially. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Discharge all duties of the office of police chief. Discharge all duties of the office of police chief. In Algonah as now or here and after required by law. In Algonah as now or here and after required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of the published agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, meeting's adjourned, it's five forty-five p.m. Thank you very much.